Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First item, council, we'll have our consent agenda, but I'll ask if there are any additions or changes to this evening's agenda. If not, we have approval of minutes from the January 27 council meeting, also a resolution for employment at Park and Rec, approval of liquor licenses to Dollar General store, American Inn, and Walmart store, and approval of claims in the amount of $363,750.97. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Seconded by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Not, please call roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next council, we have a report given by Ruston Lippincott on the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center for 2013. Ruston, everyone's received your annual report. Counselor, if you want a copy of this.
Thank you.
Welcome.
This annual report encompasses a reporting period from July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. This report encompasses who we are, what we do, how we enrich our community, our achievements, how we create opportunities to showcase local talent, and a variety of community and regional events that we all welcomed at the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center. This report features a unique and informative "By the Numbers" section, financial statement, and sources of revenue. This report also includes the committed donors, the board of directors and its employees who really make that Fairfield Arts and Convention Center work. And of course, it also features our coveted volunteer, our annual volunteer awards. So as a city-owned facility, I think it's important that I reinforce to you, the council, that the Convention Center is a gathering place for both community events and regional events that showcase a variety of performances, arts and culture, and the experiences that we can have living in small-town Iowa. We are proud to continue the tradition of welcoming national touring performances and local artists to amaze, inspire, and educate, and of course, entertain. It's where friends meet in great fellowship and joyous occasions. The center and its various room configurations all provide a sophisticated backdrop for meetings, wedding receptions, and special events. I believe it's important that we realize and appreciate the mission of the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center: to enhance the quality of life and economic growth for Fairfield and its surrounding communities, to build upon our community's love and appreciation for the arts, and present quality programming, and furthermore, to provide meeting space for residents, visitors, nonprofit organizations, and businesses to foster economic development and experience the extended family and fellowship for our community. The Fairfield Arts and Convention Center enriches our community in various ways, and I'll highlight four of them: through the direct economic impact of local expenditures through wages, materials, and services; the direct impact of local expenditures from visitors attending performances and events through our restaurants, our lodging, our retail trade, and transportation. And of course, one of the high points that I believe is that it contributes to the quality of life for our residents. It includes, it participates in the business recruitment as we continue to search for more people to move to Fairfield, and it obviously serves as a tourism attraction. And the last point I'll make on how it enriches our community is it's a gathering place for the arts to be exhibited, both national touring performances, and it provides an opportunity for our local artist community to be stars on the stage. I want to just highlight some of our achievements, which I think are, you know, and all of this to put into perspective that we are a town of just shy of 10,000 people, and the Convention Center has a staff of less than 20 full-time and part-time employees that really put all of these achievements into light. We of course celebrated our fifth-year anniversary back in 2012 with our gala. We presented our fourth artist series, which has become our flagship of our national touring performances. We put together our chamber music series, which provides people an opportunity to come watch classical and chamber-style music. We are now featuring our organ, which was originally set on the campus of Parsons College, was disassembled, reassembled, and now we have an organ music series. We hosted a nationally televised talent show competition. There's only eight other cities in the country that can say that, and we held that at the Convention Center. We contributed to the Smithsonian Magazine's designation as the number seven small-town in America. The writer came and spent an entire day, or excuse me, an entire evening at the Convention And one thing I like to talk about the Convention Center is it's where our fellow friends and neighbors and other nonprofit organizations come to raise money. We've held numerous fundraisers for other organizations. Some other points that I'll touch on is we dedicated the bar-height stained-glass window, which really gives us an opportunity to celebrate the past in that Convention Center. We created opportunities for 12 different local organizations to showcase local talent. I think that's important that we remember. Some of the local and regional events that we had, we held Fairfield High School's prom. We had middle-school etiquette dinner. We had numerous elementary choral programs. We hosted numerous Blue Zone events. We had a bridal fair, KMCD bridal fair, Dharma's Holiday Trade Fair, and Hy-Vee's Holiday Showcase. We had numerous holiday parties put on by our businesses. We had a free concert from the Navy Band. We hosted the Fairfield Public Library's Planetarium exhibit. We hosted the Chamber of Commerce's annual dinner, and Fairfield Economic Development Association's numerous events. We hosted the RagBri Community Party and numerous planning events. We hosted the Iowa Blues Society concerts. We hosted the CEDIS alcohol training and Head Start programming. And another thing I think is interesting to look at is "By the Numbers," and I'll just highlight some of the "By the Numbers" section, which I think are unique. We had 22,000 tickets sold at 123 different performances. We had patrons from 43 Iowa counties, 32 states, and the District Columbia. More than 30 percent of our patrons visit us from outside of Fairfield. I think that is really important to resonate a minute, is that Fairfield Arts and Convention Center is attracting people from outside of town. And when they come to a performance or an event, they also stop at our restaurants. You know, they stop at the gas stations, they stop on the square, the businesses, and the retail market. So, all in all, we hosted 1,343 events in a 12-month period, which is an increase of 70 percent. We welcomed 11 wedding receptions, five wedding ceremonies, three celebration of lives. That represents a 90 percent increase. We had 233 volunteers that provide valuable contributions, excuse me, to our events, and totaled 3,104 volunteer hours. And if we had to pay for that, that would be $68,000 that our volunteers contribute. So obviously, we rely heavily on our volunteers, and we value our volunteers. So, in closing, I just want to thank the council for their support for the Convention Center. It's been an interesting, exciting last seven years since we opened our doors, six and a half, but know that I firmly believe, and I think a lot of people believe, that Fairfield is a better place because we have the Convention Center. So, thank you. If there are any questions on the report, I'll happily take them.
Great report. Thanks very much, Ruston. Anything you want to point out as far as the financial statement? I see you are net positive in terms of revenue for 2013.
Well, I think what's important is, you know, we're nearly a million-dollar business, and if you look at our fundraising efforts, they're at the 30 percent. So, 30 percent of our revenues come from our supporters. And, you know, as we get further and further away from day one, it's becoming, it's a challenge, because we're not building the Convention Center any longer. We're now operating it, and we're planning for the future. So, we're working on our capital expenditure plan. As I mentioned in the beginning, the center's seven years old, and I think it's important that as the council and as the Convention Center, we come together so we can continue to support and ensure that this facility is here for the future. So I think...
But I think it's a good reminder, because, you know, we're fortunate we have a new building, yet with our ownership of this building also, as there are capital needs, it's something that we need to be on top of very quickly. So just, we welcome that. We welcome the review of those capital expenditures and what...
And I think, Mr. Mayor, it's really important to focus on that the center is getting used. And it's not just the next show that's coming, it's the business meeting, it's the things the public doesn't necessarily know is happening, but it's happened 1,343 times in 12 months.
I'm in there a lot, and there isn't any time that I'm in there that the place isn't empty, is empty. There's always something going on, there are always, even if it's people that are just looking at the building and seeing it. And, you know, a great example of this was in July, I was invited to two events. One was to introduce a young man who had rented the boardroom, the feet of boardroom, to break the Guinness Book of World Records for public speaking. He was going to speak for 36 hours, and he asked me to introduce him, so I was there at 9:00 AM, whenever, to introduce him. And then later, at noon, I was invited to Philippine-American Celebration, local organization that had statewide representation. They filled up the entire convention side of the center. And then in the theater, way off Broadway, was rehearsing for Miss Saigon that they were putting on that night, so it was full. The lead actress for Miss Saigon was from Los Angeles, she was Filipino, and she went over there, wandered over, and said, "What are all these Filipino flags?" And they looked at her and said, "Are you from Des Moines?" She said, "No, I'm from Los Angeles," and told what they were doing. They grabbed her, pulled her in, and had her sing a song for the show, promoting it to the folks in Des Moines who could come back and watch it. It's just a typical day at the center, I'm just saying.
Typical day.
So, you're doing a great job, Ruston. We all really appreciate that. Everyone knows that to accomplish this really takes solid leadership, and you provide that for us. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Any other points or questions, counsel?
Yeah, just speaking to the capital improvement side, I believe last year there was a section in this report of capital improvements that were made to the building. That was nice. I think we'd like to see that again maybe next year. I think you guys put in some handrails in the theater and things like that, just because the city owns the building, and that's one thing we're keeping an eye on. It was part of the agreement when we decided to lease it to you guys, that it would be maintained, so...
Well, I can tell you our two main capital improvement projects are: one is to replace the carpet that's in our meeting rooms and install carpet that's in our event center. That's on the events and the conference side. And on the theater side, we've recognized the need for some sound improvements. So we are in the process of kicking off our fundraising campaigns for both of those. So those are the improvement goals that we've set. The carpet, we're looking at about a $30,000 improvement, and the sound equipment is about $15,000. But I also, you know, building, as I mentioned, seven years old, we've got a very extensive HVAC system, and I know I work with Kevin a lot to figure, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to get the longest life out of that equipment, so...
Great. Anyone else, counsel? I'll entertain a motion to approve the annual report from the Arts and Convention Center.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Seconded by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thanks so much, Ruston. Appreciate it. Next council, we have a presentation by representatives of Wally Ball Group regarding our plans for the new recreation facilities that are being developed, and where and what we're going to do with the racquetball courts. And we definitely want to get that clarified, so Eric, if you'd give us a presentation, please. Counsel, you have two drawings on your table that he'll be referring to, labeled one and two.
Thank you very much, and thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight, giving us a chance to talk to you. We met with the facilities planning group about two weeks ago, had a very cordial and informative discussion. Mostly, it was them listening to us as we presented these same drawings that we've given you here, which we can go over if you'd like in a moment. I think you've all probably seen the letter that I sent relative to this agenda item. I thought I would start just by reading kind of the main points of this letter, excerpts from it. So, "Dear City Council, we are city and county residents who, with many of our friends, have regularly used the racquetball/wallyball facilities over the past 25 years. We continue to appreciate Fairfield's commitment to providing great recreational facilities and your ongoing commitment to continue to operate them. As a group, we are quite supportive of adding a gym facility and replacing the outdoor pool. We admire the community commitment and effort that created the racquetball and wallyball courts in the 1980s, and hope a similar level of success can be achieved by the current project. Relatively recently, we have learned that versions of the plan for the recreational facilities have emerged that do not retain and do not replace the racquetball/wallyball courts, but instead remove them to make room for a grand-new gym entrance facing east. The courts are missing entirely, for instance, from the master plan presented on the front page of the Fairfield Ledger on February 4. We are confident that with some creative effort, a beautiful plan can be developed that does not require removing the current racquetball/wallyball courts, and that costs no more to build or operate than alternative plans that would eliminate the courts. Let's not discard the hard-won assets we already have in hand, rather, let's integrate them into our next stage of growth. We would like some clarity as soon as possible with respect to what the city council's intentions are with respect to the future of the racquetball/wallyball facilities. Those of us who live outside the incorporated areas of the county want to know if a vote in favor of the proposed $1 million county contribution will be, in essence, a vote to lose the racquetball and wallyball courts. Is the council in a position to take a formal position on this matter? We would like for the city council to formally pass a resolution that the racquetball/wallyball courts will be explicitly integrated into the basic plan for the recreation center. If you're not in a position to do that, then we would look to your guidance on how to move forward." And if you'd like, I can briefly just talk to you about these sketches.
Yeah, if you can just talk about them briefly, Eric. It looks like, one, you've got a proposal. Both proposals leave the racquetball courts in their present position, and you have entrances built around those.
Yes, so the number-one option, there's a number-one in the upper-left corner of your map, basically puts the gym entrance on the north side, facing north, facing Highway 34, which we think actually could be a grander entrance than facing Ninth Street, arguably. The plan, the most recent plan that we saw, and we understand that the plans are in a state of flux, nothing is final, but the most recent version of the plans we saw had an entrance about 40 feet by 116 feet, right where the racquetball courts are now, that then the gym would join on the west side. So we've kept that same-size entrance and just moved it over to the north side, and redesigned the desk so that one desk will serve all four facilities: the fitness center, the new gym, the racquetball court, and the pool, which is a very important aspect, because I think the figures are something like $150,000 to $175,000 a year you can save by not having to have, by having one desk employee instead of three. And then, option number two also leaves the racquetball courts there. It leaves the entrance area, which would have conference rooms and offices and lounge area and concession stand, those types of things. Would leave it attached to the east side of the gym, but the whole gym and entrance would be moved far enough to the west to spare the racquetball courts, and again, there'd be a north entrance. So these, this is certainly not architectural drawings, they're concept drawings. My understanding from talking to Facilities Committee that they were going to go to the, back to their architect and see what's feasible, get some ideas, because it's really for the architects to figure out what works in a way of a floor plan and flow and fire exits and all those things.
Right.
We think that, you know, money is always king. We think that we could probably raise a little money to give the current place a facelift and bring it kind of up to the level of the new facility. We've seen some facilities in other places, like Eldridge, that have very simple, very economical racquetball courts with a place for spectators to watch and can attract tournaments. So, any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Eric? And I'll just mention, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, these are great. I love them. I'm glad you brought these to committee, and they could definitely work, either one. Just a point, though, that there are some other factors to involve, to consider, that are involved here. I remember when you brought this originally, the builder, we had a representative from our building company, and he said, "We need to check on, you put a taller building next to a shorter building, then you've got, say, snow and rain coming off the taller building onto the shorter building roof." Little things like that. One of these, you move the gym west, at some point, the land starts to slope away, so then there's, you have to bring in more earth and such. So, just know that there are a lot of little details to work out, but thank you very much for coming up with a plan that keeps these intact, just as a consideration. And it would be really wonderful to have numbers, soft numbers, because we're not going to get hard numbers, but soft numbers on this versus removing the existing courts and rebuilding them somewhere else on the, let's say, on the north side of the gym. So, appreciate it, but as with everything, there's so many little details and working parts. It's not quite as simple to say, "This will cost less." It actually might not, so we'll find out.
Thanks. Any other comments, counsel? I just mentioned, and Eric, you and I have discussed this, and which is why we'd ask that you go to the Facilities Committee. The way that the project has been organized is that we've had a task force that's been, you know, very generous and with their time, and been proceeding with this very professionally. And at this point in time, there are some critical elements to the whole project coming together from the financial side for any of this to move forward, that they are very focused on right now, being the election, the county election, which is requesting a $1 million contribution, and then we have a CAT grant that is asking for $1.8 million. There are still some private funds that will need to be raised also, but the idea now is that we want to get some sense over the next month, because we'll know a little bit of something, well, we'll know the outcome of the vote, we'll also know something about the CAT grant at that point in time, as to, you know, what kind of money we're going to have to work with, which is going to influence how it will be designed. Now, I think it's fair to ask, and I'll just mention this to the council, that in some way, we make a commitment to preserving these courts, because I don't know that it was any, that there was any intention to eliminate them at any one point in time. I think the grand entrance concept, when it came up, was something that was very appealing, because it does organize the whole space a little bit better, and it does, you know, give a sense of, you know, of something new, and you're, you know, you are entering something that is a better design. But one way or the other, whether, you know, the design folks can decide that they're going to continue with that and find another place for those, and that has been discussed numerous times also. Derek is aware of that. There have been numerous discussions about where else they could be placed in the new building, but the group is essentially asking that we make a commitment to seeing that these are part of the project, and I think it's a fair request, because again, we've had them for over 30 years, and they have served a great purpose, and we do welcome your contributions to help us make that happen, whatever way we do that. But, and again, as much as, and I think Michael makes a good point, these are good alternatives, and we certainly want to get those into the discussion with the design folks. But again, we'll know better what we're actually going to do once we know what kind of dollars we're going to have to work with the entire project. And I think it's fair to, you've got to be patient with us about that as well, so that we know what to do. And I think if there's, you know, less money available, it's more likely that those racquetball courts are going to stay right where they are. It would be my guess. So, counsel, I would ask if anyone would like to, and rather by resolution, I think we just, we do this by motion so that it is a vote on record. It doesn't necessarily need to be a resolution.
I'll make a motion that racquetball courts will be included in the new gym, either remain, the existing courts remain, or something is included in the new project. For me, this has always been about adding amenities, not taking anything away. I stopped by last Thursday after swimming and enjoying the sauna and the cold shower, and saw two courts being utilized by seven players each for wallyball. A lot of people I knew having a good time. "I'm going to go play tomorrow night," because it looked like so much fun. And the third court was full of gymnastics kids, so these are not underutilized or nonutilized spaces, these are very well-utilized spaces. So, completely in support of making sure they're in there. I think any path that the task force was going that didn't include these was a dead end, wasn't going to pan out. I don't think our council would have supported it anyway, so we might as well just make it official now. So, that's my long-winded motion.
Okay.
I'd like to second that motion, in condition that it's an understanding that the racquetball courts, if they were to be, the current ones taken down and replaced with new ones, that they wouldn't be phased, and that they would be part of the original plan and part of the construction when we break ground for the new gym.
I accept that amendment.
Okay. The motion by Hallie, seconded by Flornoy, and as amended. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. That votes unanimously, and we will get that message to the task force. And again, we welcome your help with the election that's coming up, and also with any fundraising going forward, and then once we get back into serious design discussions, we'll start talking about where.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, next council, we have set a public hearing for wastewater Phase 1 project, and that will be for our next council meeting on February 24 here at 7:00 PM. Kevin, any comments about what we're discussing in this public hearing?
Yes, Your Honor, this will be a public hearing that is not necessarily necessary, but it's something we felt in the very beginning, I think committee certainly felt very important to kind of cap our process on this first step in our long journey to doing this super project. So, we have had our necessary legally-required public meeting, or public hearing, but we'd like to do that again, just to let people have their feelings and have a broad public discussion of the matter.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So I'll entertain a motion that sets the public hearing for February 24.
Move to set the public hearing.
Moved by Hamilton, seconded by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. Next, we have a request for a tax abatement at 503 West Broadway from Paul Glossop, and you'll see... and you'll see this was a renovation of an apartment in the, in the building.
He's going for a super apartment, and you read about it, he's actually trying to win an award for best apartment. He really went all out.
Who's giving, who gives?
I don't, I didn't say who's award, he's giving out the award, but it's.
It's gonna be nice stuff.
It's pretty large.
Yes, it is.
Square is the place to live these days. You want to have your penthouse apartment on the square?
Makes use.
Sure.
We do find the request to be in order, Your Honor.
Okay. Entertainer motion then to approve the request for the tax abatement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thanks.
Your Honor, I'd like to, like to request that we move the next two items, the action item approving a policy there and the resolution prescribing procedure until after our closed session.
Okay.
That's pledged, counsel.
We do have some, we do have some business in closed session regarding these items, so we will just move then, so the next, next two items.
Yes.
All right, so that will move to the mayor's report. As you were, counsel, two weeks ago, I, is Ruston still here? He's not here, okay. So Russell Lippincott and I were in Los Angeles invited by the Moving America Forward TV program hosted by William Shatner, and we had a great time out there. They got a real kick out of us, we got a real kick out of them. But we produced a program that'll be edited over the next couple of months and probably be available to air on a cable network called Me Too TV. Our cables system doesn't carry that network, we're not sure, I haven't really checked the satellites at this point in time, but one of the things that we do have the opportunity to do is to purchase the controlling rights to that, our portion of the program. So it'll be, it's a half hour program, I think it'll probably be a twelve minute to fourteen minute segment with, with the commercials that'll probably be in there, and it features entrepreneurship. This program, Moving America Forward, is something that William Shatner's been doing for the last two years, and he features companies that are novel and different and doing something within their business sector that moves America forward. We were invited as the first city that they were doing a present, presentation on, so we were very honored to be that. I brought with me an award that was part of the program, this is called, it's a plaque called Moving America Forward, so we can get that, we'll get a, we'll get a better shot of this later, Jason, anyway. The, what we had the opportunity to do, and I think I did mention this at one point, to purchase the, the rights to the, to the video that would be produced was twelve thousand dollars, and, which is extremely reasonable production cost for just a video in and of itself, but then to have the talent like William Shatner and to have this designation and have it feature our, solely our community. One of the things that they're going to do along with this interview process that we had is to film in Fairfield. We've also sent them a lot of still shots, and they're going to edit something in that will, that will show all of the things that we're talking about in the program. Ruston and I were both on the program, I was talking about the entrepreneurial elements, and Ruston was talking about the quality of life and a lot of the other entertainment elements to it. So of the twelve thousand, the CBB is going to be picking up half of that, FITA is going to be picking up a quarter of that, and we're asking the city to pick up a quarter of that as well. And we will have full rights of that, something that we can put on our website that would act as a promotional piece for the city. So I'm asking for your approval for three thousand dollars to do that, of which I plan to use some of that money out of the mayor's travel budget that, that we have, so.
Yes, Your Honor, we also have a capital item within administration that has a jealously guarded ten thousand dollars still left in it halfway through the year, so we do have some other funds as well to draw from, for, to keep that number, because I don't think our line item under the mayoral has quite enough, but we do have ten thousand in there, it's a capital item for such things, so.
A move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Revolinski, second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you very much, I think we're going to really like this, it's going to be a lot of fun. Let's see, next, counsel, I have a copy of the bylaws for the Beautification Commission. Nancy Horace and I, who's Nancy, who's the chair, met about a month ago, and there are a couple of changes they would like to make in their bylaws, and I'll, we'll go on the first page, Article Four, Members, Section One, everything that we would like to amend is in that section. Right now, the membership of the commission is ten members, we'd like to move that to twelve members. And then the next item would be that the terms, they're, they're three-year terms that begin and end on September first, we want to move that to the end of the year, December thirty-first. And then the final amendment, which would be a new point, and that would be that we didn't designate a term limit, so we want to indicate that members can serve to a limit of four terms. So it would be a twelve-year limit on the terms, and some of our original members are in their eleventh year, so we just want to establish that. So I would recommend those proposed amendments to the bylaws for the Beautification Commission.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion?
Your Honor, just to clarify, these term limits that are established would actually start today. Correct. Not, they would be, they start today.
Probably, yeah, probably start them by January one.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, that's what I mean, the beginning of the year.
Yes. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. That's all I had, counsel. We have committee reports, Personnel Committee, Doug?
Yes, Personnel Committee met on February third, and we had two items on the agenda. One was a recommendation by the Parks and Rec Director, Derek, to amend the smoking policy to reflect tobacco rather than smoking use. And on review of the handbook, we discovered it was a little out of date, so that'll be rewritten and incorporated into the, I think will become a new section on wellness in general, because the second request from Derek was to establish a wellness safety policy, and to fit that into the current employee manual, I recommended to Kevin that we take smoking and drug and alcohol abuse, incorporate that all under wellness, and write a new policy and bring it all up to date. So we're working on that.
Very good. Is that everything done? Any, any questions, counsel? All right, then we'll move to our next report, and that is Public Safety and Transportation.
Tony asked me to give this report. Tony, myself, and Martha met. We discussed the Highway One South, let's see, there's a project. Kevin, can you remind me exactly which project this was?
Yes, it is, the Highway South, Highway One South project is our, our Economic Development TIF district down there, and we just gave a kind of a briefing, I guess you'd call it, about this project coming up, and it's going to be in this fiscal year, of course, because we made an agreement initially with Pilot Grove when we installed the TIF, and if everyone remembers, I don't think you were on board at that time, you may not remember this, we may need to talk about it, but, and you, two new members, wait a minute, both, I don't think both you guys were on board. We have talked about it in brief, though, prior when you first came on, both of you, but the, the Highway One South TIF project would kick off here in probably May, June. I think their original opening for the Pilot Grove Bank was in May, and that was when we were quote, going to have the project done. I think it, with, that'll probably be the summer, or the winter we've had moved forward to June, but that will include us going in there on that frontage road and basically paving that frontage road. Proposed in that project is also paving that section of trail there that goes in front of the area, and this paving project, this part of the TIF project is held up by the, of course, the values created there by Pilot Grove, and it will go to the end of the Pilot Grove property there, heading eastward. You can see that, it's, it's short distance beyond where the building is now, but the area behind there, of course, later on, we're kind of looking towards doing a housing district back there, a housing TIF, and we are having ongoing conversations, as everyone knows, with different entities, individuals. Adam, our new director of, executive director of FITA as well, getting into that neck deep. So right now, we're, we're moving toward the project, and I guess we're looking at a bidding shortly. Wouldn't you say, John, do you want to speak to it for a moment, or, that pretty much caps it, we're, about a month or two, we're looking at a bid out on that project, I would say.
What isn't clear to me in these minutes is, do we need counsel vote to approve or support this project? Do you remember, Martha, because I?
Well, we had lots of council votes to support it in passing the TIF district.
It's already in place, so.
But you will have to forward the plans and specs for a bid that's coming up, so you'll be another opportunity.
Just to make sure.
Kevin, I was curious, why, why did this go to the public safety?
Transportation aspect of it, I would assume.
Yeah, we deal with streets.
Right.
And that segues into our, one of our blue zone responsibilities is the, are the complete streets, and that would be.
Yes.
Where that would, that frontage road, once it turns south and then turns east to what would hopefully be some new housing development at some point, that is an area where we actually would have room to establish complete streets, wide enough streets for cars to, to drive and bikes to have a lane and a sidewalk for pedestrians.
Yes, and ideally, this will be the inception of our complete streets program. It'll be the first project that's included in there, and as Mike said, you, you have the streets, you have the bike lanes, you have the complete sidewalks on both sides. Likelihood of that, we would want maybe five feet, because of course, we're going to be bringing forward a proposition as part of our blue zones effort, that the city change its designated sidewalk to five feet at some point here. Well, this is a federal move too, and I think this is coming down the line eventually, four feet being just a little slim, I think we'd all admit, and so this is a great opportunity to highlight that program and going forward, what we'd like to do on the streets that are viable to do so upon, not all of them, of course, it takes a little bit of property there, but, you know, it's an exciting project, and we're, we're getting back into the TIF business in a good way, and hopefully, we'll have both economic development and housing around this general growth node area there in the south that the hospital has shown the way for, and, and ourselves as well with the hotels, so excited about it.
Great. All right, we also discussed the intersection of Twelfth Street and Burlington, that project, you might have seen the paper, really nice stained concrete on all four intersections, new, new left turn light paid for by Hy-Vee, very generous. Now Kevin, again, we're, the committee supported the city paying twenty-five thousand, do we need the council to vote on this?
This has not been before the council. No, it hasn't been before the council at this point. It will be coming up before, you heard about it in updates, and we've been talking about it. The only thing we did last year, or the things that we did last year, were a little different, they were bike racks, and they were other peripheral additions to the square that you saw. The CTG is taking a little step further, and this is a project that we've been discussing over the past year that would include the stained or colored concrete, some folks wanted me to call it colored concrete because stain sounds negative, but.
And it's not going to be stained.
Yes, it won't be, it won't be stained.
There's a big difference between colored and stained.
Yeah, it'll be stained a certain color, similar to the motif you see, or the patina you see uptown in the bricks, either the charcoal grayish or the, the more dark and bloodish terracotta, I guess, but you have to make that decision at some point.
Bloodstained concrete.
Yeah.
It's darker.
It's darker.
Well, anyway.
All right, maybe I should stop. You have that choice tonight.
All right, so, so we will.
All right. But the whole intersection will have sidewalk upon it. Go ahead, John.
We prefer to call it tinted.
Tinted, that's what he called it.
Thank you, John, thank you.
Yes, save me on the rhetoric.
And I guess one thing about that, we will be bringing an engineering agreement for the design of those improvements and the traffic signal improvement to the next council meeting for approval, so that would, I think, be kind of the first vote along the way to move ahead with the project.
And Joy just reminded me also, counsel, you will see the twenty-five thousand dollars for the city's contribution in this year's budget, so we've yet to review that as well.
Yeah, I wanted to round it out with, your last consideration of both these things is, of all these things that we're talking about in your update is in the budget, you'll, you'll have that final go-to for them. One thing that's important about this is that all the sidewalks are this way, they're, they're tinted, and what we'd like to see is this is a model going forward so that two blocks within your downtown, your collectors, basically, your sidewalk collectors would look like this inevitably, down the road, eight to twelve years, yes, on the crosswalks.
Yeah, not the sidewalk, the crosswalks.
No, the, the crosswalks themselves would be tinted in this way, and it would, you know, those collectors, and it sets them off a little bit and kind of continues what you were doing downtown with your streetscape.
There is one other thing on the South Main Street project that you need to be aware of, I think. We've had, Kevin and, and people from our company had some visits about improving South Main from Fillmore to two hundred and twenty-seven street, trying to do something about the, you know, it's two lane with gravel shoulders and so on. There was a grant that was prepared a year and a half, two years ago, to try to improve that to a three-lane traffic calming configuration. There was even some talk about a roundabout at Libertyville Road, not sure that's going to work, but the traffic calming idea with the three-lane is still a bit in the mix. We tried to get DOT to make a commitment for some funding, they said they'd be willing probably to throw the, what they call the three R money, which is resurfacing and patching toward a reconstruction project, but it's still, all, all added up, we need a couple million dollars from somewhere. And I would, DOT Commission is making one of their circuit riding visits to southeastern Iowa.
When?
In April, and was suggested by the district engineer that a delegation be put together from the city to do a presentation formally to the commission to try to get that into the mix. So we are putting together some pretty concept boards and so on of that to try to get, in a, in a more refined estimate, to try to get that put together so someone can, hopefully the mayor and maybe the transportation committee can do that before the commission and try to see if we can get them persuaded to get some money into the pot.
Great. John, do you recall the grant source that we, that we applied for? Jerry Long had made the application, it was about three years ago.
Yeah, that doesn't exist anymore. It was a one-time thing related to stimulus.
It's not something that's coming around again?
No, it's, it's not. Now, there are some, some, an application had been made by the Trails Group for funding to do some improvement to shoulders or something like that. That money could be brought into it.
Right.
That's, was an eighteen project, Flex Money, or, I'm sorry, Enhancement Project or Transportation Alternatives Program is what it's called now, that used to be called the Enhancement Money. Try to get that part of the mix. There's also some STP money that the city could throw into the mix, but it's roughly a four million dollar project, and the best we can come up with is, we still need two to three million from somewhere, and we think that DOT would be a good source.
Sounds good to me.
Back to the CTG just for a second. We have requested that Hy-Vee match to twenty thousand dollars the turning signal lights cost. When we did this about, in two thousand and twelve, our original bids were for fifteen thousand dollars, that would have went up a little, but we requested twenty thousand from Hy-Vee, their engineering department is considering that. A part of that consideration and a part of the discussion we've been having with their engineering department included a possible difference on the highway, on the street there coming off Burlington into the gas station, and there's some broad discussion that's been going on for about six to eight months with a few of us about how that could be done, or should that be, be done, or how might it be done if it were. So some of that might be coming forward, back to you again soon, but that match from them and some of the other match from the grant monies that are coming into this thing, the city's portion, I think, that's in our budgets, is around fifty thousand dollars, just shy of fifty thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, it's a great partnership, it's with the Community Transformation Grant, which is designed to increase actually wellness, but in this case, walkability and bikability. It's a very high-volume intersection, so be great to, to make it safer. Now Darryl, I'm going to ask you to come speak at this one, because I'm pretty sure you're going to want to vote about this sign. So Darryl, going back to South Highway One.
He's going to want to vote.
He's going to want us to, you know.
We know what his vote is.
Well, he's going to want us to vote. So Darryl, talk about this sign, this, remember, we, we discussed it, there's no parking corner to here rather than here to corner?
Sixth Street.
Yes.
Oh, Sixth Street, sorry.
Sixth Street.
I thought we were backing, oh yeah, Sixth Street, go ahead.
Sixth Street, right in front of the Friends Church, there's a sign, just as you're coming around from Fillmore going north on Sixth Street, and it's a no parking here to corner sign, and the confusion is on some, it says, right now, it says no parking on this side. Well, no parking this side means all the way up to Polk Street, but there's only one sign, so I don't know where the confusion is, but some people were getting tickets for parking along that side, especially during church time. So my proposal would be to take that sign post and move it just north of the driveway going into the Friends Church there, to the Parsonage there, and say no parking corner, which means at Fillmore, to here, to where the sign is, and then that way, they could park from the sign north, and I think that would alleviate a lot of confusion there.
Would painting the curb yellow have any effect on that as well? Would painting the curb yellow have any effect on that as well?
I don't see that, no.
You don't?
No. I think, I think the sign works fine. We have a couple of signs, no parking corner to here, down by everybody's. And I know to some people it's confusing, but if you say no parking here to corner, that means from the sign to the next corner.
Yeah.
And so, from no parking from corner to here, I think you could get by with that and be fine with that.
The, the only issue I really have with this language, Jarnor, was in the sense that when you read the sign, you are in front of it. And so, reading from here to corner would seem more appropriate.
We discussed it at length.
I just had to throw that in.
Corner to here was the best.
I'm confused.
Now, great thing is, Darryl has both and is, is inventory. All right, so committee voted in favor of this.
Well, and that's why, that's why I brought up-
Thanks, Darryl.
-painting it yellow and then having a sign that says, no parking area.
So, the recommendation from the committee is?
No parking, corner to here. And that's the motion I would like to make.
Motion by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen? Any more?
Well, I will just say, I'm, I would be, I probably not going to park there, but I probably would be confused. But let's just try it. I mean, if it doesn't work, we can always change it again.
Exactly. He's got the other ones in his inventory.
So, I'm not going to vote, no, I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
All right, I think I'm done trying-
Corner to here.
This is really difficult, giving a report based on someone else's notes, so I'm going to stop there.
Next council, we have a presentation on some design work that's been going on for the property that the city did inherit from the Natty family very generously. And I know there's been a lot of great work going on on this. We have some paper versions here, but we are going to receive a PowerPoint presentation. Lights.
Yeah, Park and Rec is working on another project. You have before you the Natty, the Natty Land. I brought Steve Brower, our landscape architect that the city hired. Steve, 2011, I think we brought you on board?
Just 2013.
2013, okay. Been working on this project with a couple other volunteers. And if, when you see the overall map, it's just north of Waterworks Park and just west Pleasant Lake. So, I brought Steve here to talk in detail about the plan. And I've been asked by some council members about the plan, so I think this is a good time to show you guys what's going on, going on with it, so.
Are we on here? Thank you, Derek. And thank you all for letting us give this presentation tonight and take up some of your valuable time. Can you see that okay with the podium and the?
Not so well.
Some of you not, no?
We have drawings.
Okay. Well, at any rate, we just wanted to run through some of the maps to get you more familiar with the features of the land there and some of the analysis and some of the suggestions that we've made for, for that area. When, when Derek first got in contact with me and told me about this 40 acres, I was somewhat familiar with the vicinity of, of town and, and I thought, well, that's really a very interesting project, being adjacent to two parks. It probably means that this is a project that really needs to consider much more than 40 acres, perhaps 100 acres or more. So, when we first got the LiDAR topography from the National Resources Conservation Service, we noticed right away that the Pleasant Lake relationship to the Natty Land is just really critically important. And so, when we looked at a little bit broader scale, we noticed that the watershed geography for the area was also very important, that all the water was coming down from the north as well as Crow Creek, coming through at the south, there'd be this blue line here. And so, we have all this watershed coming down here and really quite important as well as, of course, all the street systems and the neighborhoods around there. So, it, it's quite an area. So, instead of just being 40 acres, we quickly realized that it's neighborhoods all around, it's parks all around, it's streets all around, and it's a big ridge of agricultural land in the middle. It's a high ridge with multiple swales going out at perpendicular angles to the various ponds and reservoirs around. So, the land looks like this in the wintertime and it's pretty plain, subtle. There's a grove of evergreens, there are several groves of evergreens on the east side which are butted right up against the fence line, so it's just really quite a straight line that runs across there. So, the first thing that we did is we made a, a map of the area with, that we call a site analysis. And we started to look on the ground and try to transfer notes onto this map. It's kind of a working map that helps us tell ourselves and remind ourselves what the character of the ground is. So, the first thing that we noticed right away is that we have really a high ridge that runs right down the middle of the property. And the next thing we noticed, of course, is the relationship with these alternating ridges and swales that run down into these bays. And there's about a dozen of them, you can count, that go up here. So, there's really quite a strong, repetitious pattern along there. Then, of course, we also have the private Silver Lakes neighborhood here. We have the Lakeview neighborhood here and Waterworks Park and Bonneville Reservoir down there. So, when we transfer this, all this information to the various detailed points all around the landscape, we come up with this plan, which you have in front of you. There's two versions of it. One is just the plan in color like this. The other one is filled with notes on either side. Primarily, the notes on the left-hand side are for the open space of the agricultural land and the notes on the right-hand side are primarily about the Pleasant Lake and the evergreen groves on the, on the right-hand side there. We'll go into some details and look at some on-ground pictures of this area. The first thing that we want to notice is that right at the lower portion of the, of the Natty Land is a large swale. We call it the basin or the bowl. So, here it is in Nydar. These red lines are 10-foot contours and the light ones are two-foot contours. There's a total elevation change there of about 28 or 30 feet. So, if we take a look at our working drawing here, that we call the analysis, we see that these ridges and swales form really almost a bowl there. When you're on-site, it looks much rounder than it is now. We've marked in where the grass strips are for erosion control. And it's really a very interesting feature. When you're out there in the wintertime and you come over the rise and you start to look down into that area, you can see that visually is a very strong character. It's, it's surprising because it is a very subtle landscape. Then we also have other things here that we wanted to talk about. There's some points of land here. The loop trail comes right through on the bottom side. We have a one-acre plot here, just so you can get some idea of the scale. And then here in the green, you see the evergreen note grows with little notes in here about the species of the trees and which ones are dead and which ones are burned and, you know, various little things. So, looking from the west down that basin toward Pleasant Lake looks like this. You really don't see that much, but you can see the lake more clearly there than anyplace else on the site. And if you come around to the south a little bit, you can start to see that bowl effect. And if you come around to the east a little bit, looking back to the southwest, you can see the bowl even more. So, when we look at a project like this and see these different areas, it kind of starts to give us ideas as to where you might put pathways so that you can take a person through the zone to show it up to its best effect. And then further to the south, what you're looking actually across the frozen lake here at that same bay, bay number four, we call it. So, here it is again. And then here it is with the development of the, the trail system and the plan. So, here we have the loop trail down below here and footpath that comes up along the lake. There's actually a pathway system in there now. We might modify it a little bit. And then there would be a pathway that would come up onto the high ridge and come back down. And this would allow you to look down into this area. We would probably recommend putting some kind of a structure in here to hold water back a little bit and make this more of a wetland basin. And so, we'd have a range of, of plants that would go from wet to very dry up here. So, there'd be a high diversity of plants in there. The idea of putting prairie savanna on this ridge came up pretty early in the process because prairie is what was there. And what we really want to do within the realm of the conservation easement that's on the land is to really recover the land in some kind of a natural system. And of course, the pine trees over here are not natural, so we're going to talk about that a little bit also. That bay, interestingly, is, frequently has ducks and geese in it because when the wind is blowing up and down the lake, they tend to like to seek those little bays out for, for protection. So, if that whole ridge system is a prairie, I have a couple of photographs here from other prairies that we've worked on that give you a little bit of a sense. You've got that rounded landscape and then it would be filled with prairies and prairie grasses. This might be one of the ridges that is the perpendicular ridge that runs out toward the lake. And then you might have a larger area, something like this, that would cover, you know, 10, 20 acres of, of ground and really actually run on further than what this photograph runs. You might see here on the left-hand side, there's a pathway that's been mowed through there. So, this kind of character is something that we're thinking about. And although we have a lot of flowers in these two pictures, we wanted to remind everybody, I know the community is really quite familiar with prairie, but we wanted to remind everybody that these deep roots that penetrate into the soil die and regrow and die and regrow. And that process is what opened up air pockets in the soil. And that, those air pockets are what take the water down and prevent the runoff. So, it's really a sustainable feature to plant prairie out there. The NRCS has developed some CRP zones according to this base map. And this is a little bit sort of at a gross scale right now, but here you can see the pathway running through. And here's the basin that we've just looked at. And if you look at the white, that would be tall grass prairie. The blue would be short grass prairie. These areas here would probably be some mowed areas to start with because of some weed problems in those areas. Down below here, we've talked about moving the loop trail a little bit and we have some prairie enhancement, pollinator gardens down in there. And then, they did not do anything with this lower portion here because they see that as being a project that might be funded by Fish and Wildlife Service. So, it would be really out of the realm of what they would be helping with. We'll talk about funding sources a little bit more later on. Then if we look at these evergreen groves along the east side, between the fence line and the, the lake, we notice that they're separated. The evergreens are basically on the high ground and the swales or the ravines are open and run between. And most of the area that is not within those little evergreen zones is second growth, shrubbery, a lot of it's sort of exotic species like honeysuckle and mock orange, things that are really not very well tuned into the whole natural idea there. And in some cases, they could help contribute to disease or fire hazard in there. So, we wanted to mark all those things out so that we could see exactly what we had to deal with in the future. And if we take one area that's a little bit further to the north here, we see there's a, that's right, there's an area right in here that has a little bit of erosion. So, we've talked about a possibility of another feature here that would be a water feature. There's actually about three of them along this area. And you can see here that existing area of the pine trees. And what we've done is we've brought the pine trees sort of up over into the Natty Land so that we actually get kind of a, an intermeshing of vegetation zones from the existing park to the new land. So, we didn't have that straight fence row line there. So, the prairie would go out, in some cases, on the ridges toward the lake and the evergreen groves or, or native hickory, oak hickory woods would come up into the prairie savanna. The other thing that I wanted to point out here is just kind of a small thing, but it's, it's interesting, is there are several places here where we have large trees that are either dead or still standing in the groves of the evergreens. And these create an interesting opportunity. There are quite a few trees in there that need to be pruned out and some that need to be cut down. And when we do that, we want to be sure that we're allowing for cavity nesting birds. Things like chickadees and nuthatches are prominent in those evergreen woods. And one of the things that's so important when you're walking through there, you know that the evergreen woods there is called the magic forest by some people locally. And I like to call it the, the whistling mystery forest in a way because these birds are always present in there and they're not, they're not around in every other neighborhood. And so, you have a really interesting sound effect as you walk through this evergreen forest that you do not have in the prairie or you do not have in an oak hickory forest. So, this is a really important thing. It makes this forest really unique and it completely changes the scale and the character of land on the east side of that fence row. So, even though we might not plant evergreens in an area like that in a conservation plan, the fact that they're there and they have such a strong character makes them really important and we should try to take advantage of them. We do have chickadees and nuthatches in there. I've heard them several times. We even have a great horned owl that roosts in there. Not this one, this one's in a different forest, but just wanted to show you. Then you come back to these areas where they have the clearings. And this particular big old silver maple is all kind of split and leaning here. That was taken last, oh, about last March, I guess. And then sometime during the summer or early fall, it fell over. So, what we could do in a situation like that is take out that, that old tree, let the sunshine down into that dark shady forest and then plant new habitat plants, grasses, flowers, shrubs and small trees that would increase the diversity of species in the forest. So, the clearing would be kind of a bright spot in the, in the middle of a large, dark, secluded forest. And also, when we're cleaning up, you can see all that brush in the background there. Most of that's honeysuckle and mock orange and, now, there's some mulberry in there too. Much of that would have to be cleaned out. The bent tree here is actually a red elm. Now, most folks might look upon that tree as being kind of a scraggly old tree and not of tremendous value, but I see that tree as having a tremendous amount of character. And it just so happens that the trail goes right around that tree. You can't hardly see where it is, but it becomes a feature that is unique and different to the rest of the forest. So, it's the kind of thing that we want to look for and try to take advantage of it when we find it. The alternating ridge, swale and bay situation along here is basically that area that we've just been talking about. What we would like to do would be to plant some new native trees in the areas where the pines aren't and bring the pines on up into the Natty Land just a little bit to relieve that area. This is one of the other water features. It's up at Bay 8 and there's again a fairly steep area there. We could put a little dam in there, create a wetland area. And around that area, we could create a wildlife food plot. It would have both annual and perennial plants in it. And it would be particularly good, along with the short, short grass prairie that runs along the ridge for grassland birds. You know, grassland birds have been declining because of the fact that we have such a small amount of short grassland in Iowa. So, it's things like boblink, bobwhite quail. There's several species of sparrows that, that really like these short grasslands. And by focusing on them, we would bring more of these species back into the area. And another project that I'm working on the other day has pathway systems similar to the ones that we're suggesting here. And I pulled into the little parking lot and the bobwhite quail is right there in the pathway system. And they quickly scooted off into the prairie. There isn't much in the line of bobwhite quail in this area. However, four or five years ago in the neighborhood, when I was working on a project, I did see one standing up on a rock. So, that was kind of neat. The other thing that we want to talk about is this whole decline in the pollinators. We, you know, you've probably read articles recently that, you know, the last year, the monarch count in, in Mexico was, I think, a 42% decline. So, there's, the pollinators are really in, in trouble. And what we could do is consider this whole thing a giant pollinator garden, but we could take certain areas of it along the trail and really focus in on developing them to be stronger pollinator areas. And so, if you look down at the very bottom of the drawing where the loop trail comes across that, that, that straight line, it kind of goes up over the hill there, it's a high point. We've thought about the possibility of making the trail go up onto the hill a little bit more and creating a shallow pond there that we could use for irrigation for an orchard and have the pathway then actually come up and through the orchard. Shows it a little bit more detail here. Pond would be over here. And here, we would use some excavated soil from some of these wetland features to build up sort of an observation mound so it would be high and dry. features to build up sort of an observation mound. So it would be high and dry. And there, we could have all the really, really dry pollinator species. So we'd really be building up the diversity and all that. So you might say, why would we want to focus so much on flowers and pollinators and prairie and these evergreens and all this diversity? What difference does it make? Well, the difference that it makes is that in terms of quality of life, more and more people are tuning in to nature. More and more people recognize that when you go out in nature, you're searching for something, you find it, you're surprised, and then you start to anticipate the next thing that you might find. And that process leads to renewal. And so if we can create a system that has high diversity in it, that means more species, more surprises. More surprises means the visitor will come back more repeatedly. And the more times you come back, the heavier the use of the area, so you can justify it, and the more people really enjoy it. So we've had some other projects like this where we've used the same theory. One is at the Lipold School in Burlington, where we have a two-acre prairie. And here you have a rock outcrop, a prairie with a pathway going around it. There's eventually going to be a shelter here and a circle of rocks over here that's sort of a memorial. What this did is it stimulated the teachers into letting the kids get the seed, mix the seed up, go out and seed the area down, focus in on the pollinators, start to understand why these things are so important, and then start to realize that the close-ups of all these little animals really start to create a fascination, almost an infatuation. And when that happens, you start to see these things up close. For example, butterflies, not many people have a chance to really see the fuzzy furry part of a butterfly, or see those little proboscis going down into the flower. But when you have a photograph and take a picture like this, all of a sudden, the most common butterfly, a painted lady, becomes a whole work of art. And the kids, of course, in this case, we have a lot of rocks out there, and the kids just love to sit in the rocks and find the little niches. And the teachers ask them to make notes about what they see. So we're anticipating prairie experts and entomologists are going to come out of this middle school in a few years. So the message is that when children have a chance to see surprising things up close, they learn, discover, and broaden their world. It's that whole juxtaposition between small-scale and wide-eyed thinking. Lots of interesting little things pop up in these areas. And one of the most important things about all these animals that we're showing you that are common animals is that when you see them, and they're looking back at you, there's an exchange that happens. And I've studied many conservationists from all over the world, and almost every conservationist points out to that day when he was a kid and he had that eye-to-eye contact, and it changed their life. So this whole idea of renewal is really, really important. This is a very, very common butterfly. It's a sulfur. I'm not even sure which kind it is because they hybridize so much. But have you ever seen such a thing? To look at something like that up close is really something. And how about the moths? You know, we have these big hummingbird moths. They're really kind of common, but hardly anybody knows that they're out there because they dart around so fast. This is one in stop motion. And then the wonderful story that happened to me, we had a project similar to this, and we had a master gardener working to help maintain the prairie. And you know, prairie has kind of a bad reputation. It's really important that prairie not get fertilizer, and you don't want to overwater prairie, and you don't want to fuss around with it. But a master gardener has the inclination that they want to take care of things, you see? They want to kind of control it. So we had this master gardener coming in here, and we had to say, no, no, don't water, no, no, don't fertilize, and so forth. And finally, he got the hang of it. And he was in there working, and he was working more than he had to work because he enjoyed it so much. And one day, he found a praying mantis out there on one of the New England asters. And this was outside of an office building. And so I thought, I'm going to have to get a picture of a praying mantis to tell this guy's story. He scooped the praying mantis up in his hands, and he took it into the office building and went around to each cubicle in that building and said, see, look at this. You may never see this again in your whole life. And it was a praying mantis eating a wasp. Fairly simple thing, but it just so totally fascinated him. I thought, my gosh, I got to tell that story. So I happened to run into a praying mantis, and I scooped it up, and I took it out to the school prairie. And it was between three asters, and I laid down, and within five seconds, that praying mantis had grabbed a honeybee. There were just thousands of honeybees all around. So it's pretty neat. So the reason why the prairie and the savanna and the native woods is so important there is because of the use that it will guarantee. The people will come from all directions, from all of those neighborhoods, and also from the schools. When I give school prairie discussions, I usually say that every school in the world needs to have an outdoor classroom with prairie in it or woodlands. So thank you so much for your time. If you'd like to ask any questions about the maps, I'd be glad to go into it. I know there's a lot to absorb here. If you'd like to have a committee meeting or a work session, something like that, I'm sure that Derek can arrange it.
Great. Thank you, Steve. That's an inspired vision, really terrific. And I think we definitely understand all the points that you're making about the putting together a more diverse ecosystem within there to get the maximum value out of it. We really appreciate that. Derek, any comments about timeline? What is your board saying about this project?
We're going to plan it in beans this next year, then we're going to go into doing the project. And we're going to put a lot of it in CRP. We hired a farm operator to operate the land. The federal government will pay the farmer, and the farmer will turn that money back into the city, so then we can keep doing projects.
Okay. Very good. We really appreciate getting a peek at what's been done thus far. Great work. Thank you very much.
Derek?
Your Honor. John, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry, is this going to be like a self-funding thing based on the CRP income, and gradually, gradually do all these little improvements? Is that the idea that you're following?
That is partly the idea. But we also think that there's about at least 10 different government agencies that have small funding processes that we could apply.
Great.
For planting, for the wetland features, tree planting, and so forth. A big part of, important part of the component of working this thing is going to be NRCS. And Doug Entminger has worked on this already, and he has several of the funding possibilities lined up in his water features. So he's really enthused about it, and we like what he's doing.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you again.
One last question. On the private drive that runs north of the park property, have you talked to any of the homeowners down that lane about that potential parking on the north side?
There's still a miniature, I believe, that's... I'm sorry. I was just talking about, I got used to the big dark.
The private drive that runs north of this property?
Yes, the one that's on the north side of the property, that's where you see the, what is the name of that one? Do you remember the name of that one? It's not Silver Lakes is the first one here that runs down, and it goes to the southward.
Yeah, there's singing cedars back there. There's three properties.
Hoglossup was at the end of that road, but I don't know, I can't remember the name of that one.
In terms of just having access for parking, is that a...
Yeah, I wanted to make a point of that, too, because this one, the main access is planned here off that private drive to the north. It spans the north end of the property. But if you see Silver Lakes Drive coming by on the west side and going southward there, I was approached at one point some time ago, it's been quite a while, I can't remember how long, I mean, over a year, I think, maybe a year ago, by Silver Lakes. I do believe he's the chairman, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but I do believe he's the chairman of the homeowners association there. And they were, I guess, wanting to speak with us at some point about a consideration of the city taking that street, Silver Lakes. Did you see there's parking off of that street?
These are his concepts at this point. In terms of getting easements or working out the details, that would come in.
Yeah, we really hadn't gone very far with that, Doc.
Alright, just curious.
The other thing, too, Steve, for long-term planning, there is another property on the north side that the owner is in the initial stages of making some gifting plans potentially years out that would, I think, connect at a northwest and northeast boundary. So be able to start to include more of the watershed in that. Yeah. Great. And with this planning, in fact, we are sending him copies of this plan right now to let him know what's being done with this piece of property, see if we can move that along. So at this time, counsel, we will go into closed session, according to Iowa Code 21.5J, to discuss real estate matter. So entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Move to go into closed session.
Second by Hamilton, second by Revolinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. But thank everyone for participating in the meeting this evening, and we'll clear the council chambers at this time.